Welcome, everybody. It's good to see so many faces, really. It's a nice turnout. We appreciate you coming. We appreciate your interest. We're going to start off with opening a Select Board meeting and soliciting public comment. If you have something to say, just raise your hand. I'll recognize if you come to the podium. You speak to the Select Board. You have three minutes. If the comment is related to the TCVC part of the program, I would ask you to reserve your comments for then. There'll be times allotted for plenty of questions and answers during that presentation. So, to begin with, does anybody have a public comment they would like to make before we transition over? Okay, we're going to close. We're going to close the Select Board meeting, and we will turn it over to a public hearing. And I will give that to -- I'm sorry, open the public hearing. And I will turn that over now to Cord Blimquist, who is going to handle the majority of the content for the presentation on the TCVC.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for showing up. Glad to see we have a full house. I'd like to thank the board for hosting us tonight.
That way?
Uh, no.
Obviously.
Yeah.
Obviously.
Okay.
Nobody fall asleep.
Well, we've got a lot to cover tonight, so I'll make our introduction short. I'd like to introduce, maybe people can raise their hands, the other members of the Town Center Vision Committee. Scott Bugby is our chair and our board's selectman representative. I am Cord Blimquist. Joining us tonight as well is Ben Jeans. Ben's over there. Patricia Jenkins, Bambi Miller, and John Tappin. We want to thank the Facilities Committee for their work in identifying problems with the town buildings and providing a path forward to the Select Board. With that, let's get started. Today, we'll be reviewing problems with our town center buildings, how to solve those problems, the conceptual designs we developed for the town center, the cost and bond associated with that project, why the Select Board is asking -- is acting on this now, and the advantages of this plan. First, let's make sure we know what buildings we're talking about. We're going to be addressing the five buildings that make up our town center: the Lee Public Library, the Town Hall, the Town Hall Annex, the Historical Society Museum, and this is the official name: The Tool Shed with Tramp Room. I want to begin with our highness traffic building, the Lee Public Library. In 1962, the Central Schoolhouse was moved up Lee Hook Road to become the Lee Public Library. This 120-year-old building has seen several additions. The most recent was 22 years ago. Demand for library services continues to grow. According to 2017 state statistics, the Lee Library hosts over 350 programs a year, has over 19,000 visits per year, has a collection of 25,000 volumes, including print, audio, and video, has an annual circulation of 37 volumes, including 12,000 children's volumes, and over 5,000 ebook and downloadable audiobooks. Its space is increasingly limited, with Storytime spilling out of the story corner into the aisles. Note that these shelves are higher than children's library shelves should be, but the library's had to grow up instead of out due to its space constraints. Larger programs are held in the basement -- that's my son in the corner -- which is not ADA compliant. That's Americans with Disabilities Act. You can see the stairs here. It's not insulated, and doubles its storage space, and it can quickly run short on room. Other events held in the Central Schoolhouse can be distracting to other patrons and also quickly fills up on space. The Central Schoolhouse also doubles its storage and the staff break area. Not many libraries feature a stove top alongside the stacks. The building needs an electrical upgrade, including transition to LED lighting, separate male and female restrooms, insulated windows, heat recovery ventilation. It needs to correct multiple ADA compliance issues and reinforcements of its floors to handle library stack loads. Next, let's talk about the Town Hall. Our Town Hall was recently added to the State Register of Historic Places. This status doesn't come with restrictions, but does make it easier to qualify for grants. This Greek Revival-style building once acted as a meeting space, but it has since filled up with the administrative functions of the town. This includes the clerk, the tax collector, the welfare office, finance, and administration. Once used for dance hall -- or for dances and Select Board meetings, the Town Hall is now separated into cubicles. This arrangement lacks room for meetings or confidential conversations, such as requests for tax exemptions or employee reviews, which must be confidential according to state RSAs. There's no way to limit access to staff desks or records, and there's not enough room for records. In fact, records are split between the Town Hall, the Town Hall Annex, the Public Safety Complex, and this storage container, which has no temperature or humidity controls, making it a poor place to store town records that the town is mandated to keep. Accessible meeting space consists of a folding table in the middle of an open room. This means that meetings disturb work in the adjacent cubicles. The committee space upstairs is inaccessible to anyone unable to navigate steps, and room for public meetings is vital. These volunteer commissions and committees perform valuable work for the town. Because of this, meeting space should be made a priority. Now, let's talk about the physical state of this pre-Civil War building. Here you can see some of the temporary fixes under the Town Hall floor. The root causes of this damage: the dirt crawl space with limited ventilation needs to be addressed. These conditions have led to rot and add to the discomfort of working in the Town Hall, making for frigid floors, requiring space heaters under most employee desks, which leads me to energy efficiency. This structure uses window AC units instead of an official and efficient climate control system. It has non-insulated windows and an aging and inefficient boiler. The latest engineering report noted that the electrical system was beyond its service life and should be replaced. The building has multiple ADA compliance issues, structural issues, and lacks separate male and female restrooms. It also lacks heat-recovering ventilation unit. Next slide, there we go. Instead, the building is ventilated through its porous insulation, which extends from the floors to its roof, such as the daylight that can be seen through the eaves here. I took this last Friday. But on the bright side, this may help to cool the town's computer server, which utilizes this fan. Next, let's talk about the second home to the town administrative functions, the Town Hall Annex. The Annex was built in 1950 by volunteers on donated church land using timber from the town forest. It originally served as a firehouse. It now houses the planning and zoning and code enforcement offices. This building also suffers from a lack of adequate storage space, inefficient mechanicals, including its boiler, a lack of proper ventilation, non-insulated windows, an aging and insufficient electrical system, poor lighting, multiple ADA and code compliance issues, and dangerous back into the road parking. This building would not be used in its current capacity if there were sufficient space to house all town administrative functions together. Next, let's talk about the Historical Society Museum. The South Lee Freight Depot -- there's so many tongue-twisters in this, so forgive me if I tumble over anything -- is also on the State Register of Historic Places, which was built -- and it was built around 1874, and it once stood at the junction of today's Route 125 and Route 152. It's now the home of the Lee Historical Society Museum. This building lacks sufficient display space for the Historical Society's collection, which means some of it resides in a damp basement without adequate ventilation. That same basement is cracked, bowing inwards and leaking. The second floor sags due to insufficient support. Heat is provided by a direct vent propane heater with no other climate control. For a bit of good news, let's talk about the Tool Shed with Tramp Room. Also on the State Register of Historic Places, this building is one of the last remaining tramp or hobo accommodations in the state. This -- excuse me. This structure continues to be used for storing town equipment, and while it needs repairs, the structural report notes that they are minor. Finally, the parking lot can easily be as cramped as the buildings. In this case, no special events or meetings were happening at all. This was last Friday after Storytime -- other families at Storytime had left the library, and there were only two or three parking spaces available. In summary, all of the buildings at the town center need upgrades or have upgrades and repairs that need to be made. The most heavily used, the Town Hall, the Town Hall Annex, and the library are poorly insulated, energy efficient -- inefficient, have several code compliance issues, and most importantly, lack the space necessary to serve the needs of staff and the public. So, how do we solve these problems? After evaluating 11 possible options, the Facilities Committee recommended purchasing land from the church and pursuing a plan that renovates the existing buildings, solving the problems associated with each, and creating a new office building and library addition to address space constraints. The land was purchased for just over $180,000, much less than the $250,000 approved by the voters. But why not just renovate? If you add up the square footage of the Town Hall, the Town Hall Annex, the storage container, and the storage space used at the Public Safety Complex, you get a total of 3,900 gross square feet. When the Town Center Vision Committee, working with Levalle-Brenzinger Architects, calculated the program needs of the Town Hall functions -- that's everything that goes into those buildings -- we came to 4,900 gross square feet. Some basic math shows that you simply need more space, 20% space, more space to be exact, and you can't get there by renovating. In fact, renovating would only shrink these buildings. It would add bathrooms, make ADA and code compliance -- and make ADA and code compliance changes, making the space problems even worse. The same logic applies to the library. You can't fix everything without reducing the usable space of the library, making the crowding and overlapping use problems even worse. Instead, the Select Board's vision proposes to build new and renovate. This takes advantage of the lower cost of renovation, about 60% less per square foot than new construction, while giving the Town Hall the added square footage it needs by building new when needed. So, let's move on to the conceptual design for the town center. Here is the proposed layout, and I should underscore that this is conceptual. Things could change as the process moves forward, but we're confident that we've gotten the space needs correct, thought through the trade-offs involved in the site layout, gotten a realistic, professionally estimated build cost with enough contingency that we can plan to spend less than the proposed budget. By keeping our buildings on one site, this plan takes advantage of economies of scale. These buildings can share well-inseptic systems, be connected through a common telecom network, and share meeting spaces. This plan also leverages economies of scale in construction. By addressing the town center problems in a single project, we would allow crews to stay on-site to do multiple jobs, cutting costs compared to a multi-stage or multi-site plan. These buildings would share a 78-space parking lot, set back 50 feet behind a green space. Two driveways would replace the current 175 feet of paved frontage. These driveways would provide two points of access, one near the Town Hall. The other opposite Wednesday Hill Road is recommended by the DOT. A fire system would be added to this space, addressing a need that's already part of the capital improvement plan. And the buildings have been cited to allow for expansion, so we're not boxed in like in the current site. Next, let's zoom in on the Lee Public Library. The proposed addition to the library would extend the building eastward and add 3,900 square feet to the existing footprint, and has been cited to allow for potential future expansion. Here's a view from the front of the Central Schoolhouse. And here's a view focused on the new front entrance. The new library creates a dedicated office space for staff, a central circulation desk, new fully accessible restrooms, the New Hampshire Room, a meeting room and special collection space for local and state books, a periodicals and reading area, a space for expanded collections of audio, adult fiction, nonfiction, and public computer workspaces. A new display area would be located next to the circulation desk, which would allow the library staff to see nearly all of the new library from a single workstation, which would be adjacent to a new periodicals and reading area. The new design would further create a dedicated young adult section, and the children's library would be separated from the adult area, making the children's programs less distracting to other patrons. Here's a rendering of the children's library. Notice that unlike the current library, all of these shelves are accessible to small children, and there's a dedicated Storytime space, no more spilling out into the aisles. The Central Schoolhouse would become a dedicated gathering and event space, with two additional accessible restrooms and a kitchenette that can serve both the needs of the public and library staff. This meeting room, along with the New Hampshire Room, could be used not only for library-run events, but town functions and events organized by the community, capitalizing on this shared town center vision. This addition would improve access to the library's collection and meeting spaces for all residents, and that collection would be allowed to be retained and grow rather than be discarded. Now, let's talk about the municipal office building. Take time to reflect while I drink. This 4,840-foot building, square foot building, would provide a single home for the town center's customer service functions. No more splitting functions across buildings or using containers for town files. Here, too, the sighting has allowed for expansion, reducing future expansion costs. The new municipal office building will feature up-to-date electrical, mechanical, and insulation, providing a purpose-built office environment. The layout would better serve residents of Lee by creating a number of service windows, providing more convenient access to common services such as the clerk, planning and zoning, and administration. When we finalize, again, I need to note that these are conceptual, the new layout will provide for secure record storage, improved security, improved staff coordination, while allowing for privacy for focus work or confidential discussions, ensuring that we are in compliance with state law. This approach, oh wait, this is also conceptual, would allow functions currently spread across four structures to be consolidated into a single, modern, efficient, code-compliant, and fully accessible building. With a new office building, what would happen to the Town Hall? The Town Hall would return to its original function as a public meeting space in the heart of our New England tradition of self-governance. The clerk's office could become a dedicated office and file storage space for committees and commissions. The second floor would also be renovated and available to those who can access it. And of course, the renovation would fix the floor and crawl space, replace the electrical and mechanicals, add insulation, and repair the structure. And a kitchenette would be added for refreshments, which would make it perfect for hosting dances, just as it did in 1842. This is where project phasing becomes important. So, this is a lot of details. I hope we -- I hope I get this across correctly. The Town Hall can't be renovated until the municipal office building is complete and staff are relocated. During that time, the Select Board has proposed setting aside $100,000 a year for two years in a separate capital reserve fund towards the Town Hall's renovation. By dedicating these funds towards a project but not fully funding the project, the town will be able to pursue grants, such as the New Hampshire Elchep or Moose Plate programs, which are usually awarded as matching funds. This approach reduces the cost of this project to the town and allows us to build on the efforts of the Heritage Commission, who worked to add our Town Hall to the State Register of Historic Places. The Historical Society could also pursue grant funding thanks to its state register status, but only after the Town Hall project is complete, because we don't want to compete against our own grant application. The Historical Society, further, needs to be moved away from the library in order for the library to expand. But this relocation would also solve one of the museum's biggest issues, its foundation, as it would be placed on a new basement on the east side of the expanded town center. The Annex, which is currently slated to be moved as well, is being further examined by the committee with an eye towards driving down the total cost of this project. Finally, there's the tool shed. Its modest structural needs can be addressed with local labor. We think we're up to the task. These steps are all laid out in this basic approach to the stages of construction, renovation, and relocation. Stage one would see the Historical Society and the Korean War Memorial moved. The municipal office building and the library addition would then be built. Stage two would relocate all Town Hall functions to the municipal office building and the library functions into the addition. Stage three would see the current library space renovated and the annex moved. Stage four would see the library occupy its entire building. And finally, stage five would see the Town Hall renovated after grant money has been secured. With that, I'll turn things over to John Tappin to discuss the project costs and the
In the conceptual project budget, all costs include a 10% contingency. For the library, renovation of the existing structure costs $480,000, and the addition costs $1.37 million, for a total of $1.85 million. The municipal office building costs $1.7 million. In-site development, which includes land clearing, relocating the museum and the annex, utilities, parking lots, walkways, and landscaping, costs $800,000, for a total of $4.35 million. Separately budgeted Town Hall costs $400,000. Funding sources. The town has existing capital reserve funds to draw on, and the balance will come from a bond. The total cost is $4.35 million. From the town buildings' capital reserve fund, the capital improvement plan shows expected withdrawals of $34,000 for town center buildings in the next two years, and leaving a balance of $100,000, an additional $93,000 could be withdrawn, for a total of $127,000. At the beginning of the coming fiscal year, the Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund will have a balance of $378,000, and there is $60,000 in the library capital reserve fund originally intended for the library community center and now available for building or adding to the current library. The remainder, $3.78 million, would come from a bond. A level principal 20-year bond is proposed. Repayment of principal, shown in blue, is the same each year, and as the remaining loan balance decreases, the interest payments, shown in orange, also decrease. The net interest cost for 20-year bonds issued by the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank this past June was 3.24%, which was an increase of 0.57% from the year before. So, in this example, a 4% interest rate is used here. If the bond was issued in the second half of fiscal year 2020, there would be no payment until fiscal year 2021. Tax increase for Town Center project. This chart shows the tax rate amounts that support the current debt service and the amounts that would support the proposed Town Center project costs. The reference level is the current tax rate, which includes 15 cents to pay for the Public Safety Complex bond, which retires in fiscal year 2023, and 8 cents to pay for the transfer station bond, retiring in fiscal year 2024. These amounts decrease each year. In fiscal year 2020, the Town Center bond would add 19 cents, and the new Town Hall renovation capital reserve fund appropriation would add 22 cents to the tax rate. In fiscal year 2021, when the first repayment of principal will occur, there's also predicted to be an increase in operating and maintenance costs due to the increase in town building floor area. This amount was conservatively estimated to be less than $48,000, adding 10 cents to the tax rate. The largest increase is in fiscal year 2021, when the added debt service plus increased O and M plus the appropriation for Town Hall renovation will have added $1.2 to the current tax rate. In fiscal year 2022, this amount drops to 77 cents. What effect would this tax rate increase have on the tax bill? This year, the median house value in Lee is $229,500. This property valuation would see a tax increase of $92 in fiscal year 2020 and $233 in fiscal year 2021, dropping to $176 in fiscal year 2022. These amounts are not cumulative. They're relative to the baseline of where we are today. And Cord is going to pick it up from here. Thank you, John.
So, why do this now? This plan allows us to be proactive, not reactive, addressing problems with our town buildings before they become worse, potentially displacing town functions and employees. And that's why we should invest in our town center now. We should stop spending and start investing. It's unwise to continue spending money on temporary fixes and stopgap measures. Investing in a comprehensive, well-planned solution to our town's needs would break the cycle of Band-Aid solutions. And this plan solves our problems with space building conditions and efficiency in some pretty incredible ways. This plan allows our town to preserve its history in a way that makes financial sense, only building what we need to. By pursuing outside preservation funding, we can leverage the history of our town to the benefit of its present. This plan also takes advantages of economies of scale in several ways. It creates one larger construction project rather than several small-scale renovations, and it creates a unified town center with shared infrastructure and shared meeting spaces. This reduces the total cost for buildup when compared to other options. It also keeps emergency and non-emergency services separate, honoring the 50-year plan for this public safety complex. It reduces the energy use of existing structures, and finally, this town center truly centers our town, keeping Lee a distinctly New England place, preserving our traditional town center, a Town Hall, a library, church, and school. With that, I thank you. I encourage you to visit leetowncenter.org, follow us on Facebook, and share your feedback with us. With that, I'll turn things back to Mr. Brown.
So, I'm sure there's a lot of questions out there, and we will open it up for a question and answer session, but I would like to establish a few rules relative to the management of the -- everybody will get a chance to answer or to ask their questions. And what I would like is to allow whoever wants to start the process, but I would like to limit everybody to start with two questions when you come to the podium. You have two questions. After everybody gets their shot at their first one or two questions, then we'll start the process to go into those people that have a third question. So, with that, who would like to -- who would like to be first? Yes, sir?
We'll pull apart. Will you come to the podium so we can -- everybody can hear? Thank you.
What will be the function of the Annex? Bob Hart, Tuttle Road.
We're still determining what to do with the Annex. There's a couple of different options, but we haven't determined exactly what to do with it yet.
But it's worth preserving?
The thought is now to move it or maybe a quick stay in its place right now, but a brief purpose for some other purpose. We're still investigating that.
Do you anticipate that you'll be needing more employees to make all this work?
The only one that I can think of that talk my head out on that question is in terms of maintenance now. Part of the O and M numbers that John Tappin gave you is the need for another person in terms of building maintenance. Right now, we have two part-time people. We probably go to a full-time person with a part-time person, maybe, but that cost is in there.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, anybody? Wait just a second. Bill? Yes, sir. Go ahead. That's all right. Go ahead, please.
Hi, Alnado. Couple questions. What type of construction?
What type of construction are we looking at? And are these quote numbers of $4.3 million? Because I keep seeing budget, and in my department, a budget means I'm throwing a number at you.
I want to interrupt you for a second, please. I should repeat your name and address.
Alnado, Belane.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Can I... We should have introduced them earlier, but we have two representatives from Will Valley-Bresting. We use them as our experts, if you will. One of the faces is Rob Grovesek and Kathleen Porter. So just, they're here. If you want technical questions, they can ask of those particular things. Go ahead, John.
Well, I was going to give a simple answer. All the spaces are, the new spaces are commercial construction, non-residential. We did have, and I don't know if it got copied, a page...
Nope.
I don't want to read the whole page. We have a page provided by the architect, which shows the, what's in the commercial construction versus residential. And we also have a 12-page basis of design, which shows all those details. I don't know if I can just pick out some comparisons of what are the biggest differences. The walls are all 5/8 drywall. All the office spaces, all the interior walls have acoustic insulation in them. It has, all the doors, the hardware are all commercial grade. Doors are solid core, not hollow. They have kick plates, they have large handle, whatever that thing is called, behind the handle there, all full life safety. So in office space, all the rooms have smoke detectors. It's all tied together with, as you would have for a commercial building, with horns and strobes. The fresh air requirements, ventilation is all based on the occupancy of the building. So where we have meeting spaces, the meeting spaces range from conference rooms for a dozen to meeting spaces of 30 or 40, 40 in the library, town hall of 70 or more. So the ventilation systems are for that capacity. Everything is ADA accessible, automatic entrance system, ADA compliant restrooms, the restrooms aside, and numbers of restrooms are sized for the building capacities. I was amazed, right now I counted, I think that currently at town center, there are three bathrooms. Is that right? And in the final design for these buildings, there's 11. And that's based on the occupancy of those meeting rooms.
What about the exterior of the building? The exterior look like?
Oh, the exterior is, I'm trying to think of what it means. Appearance is clapboards. It's a semitish board, so it's longer lasting, requires less frequent painting than good old-fashioned pine clapboards. But it's, the appearance looks like what's there now. Not the brick building, but it looks like the library and the wood clapboards that are there now.
What's in the middle is clavels and the drywall. Is it wood?
Yes, it's, the exterior walls are 2x6 wood studs, wood framed, 24-inch on center, 2-inch polyisoe with 3.5-inch fiberglass. So it's all...
Yes, I get it. Foam and insulation.
Correct.
I'm going to interrupt. Did I answer your question, sir?
The windows, the windows.
Yep.
Details on the windows as to...
The panes, are they plastic, are they...
I don't remember that detail.
I think we used a window type that we use on a lot of smaller, usable projects. It's a fiberglass type. I don't have, I have a base of design, but...
Hi, my name is Bob Grovesek. I live in Ankenso, New Hampshire. So the windows are residential looking, so they can meld into the overall sort of town look, but they're high energy efficiency. They would meet both the 2009 and the unadopted 2015 energy code. So they'd be quite a bit higher than if you use up in just a house.
But a single pane?
Double pane, low E glass. I mean, people have to remember that this is conceptual, so we did a base of design specifically at this point, to not do what you were saying. I totally get where you came from, where we weren't just going to sort of roll the dice and throw a number at it with our budget consultant. We actually came up with a base of design, as John said, which... I did find, fiberglass did it. Fiberglass, the fiberglass window frames, which are much more efficient and they last forever, and they look like regular wood, which is what we've been using extensively. But the base of design point that you brought up, and I'll go back and sit down, is that we wanted to come up with a quality standard, and John did a great job of explaining some of those differences. So while the buildings look a little bit residential in nature, to blend in with a community, they're built on a very different standard, okay? Because their municipal facilities have to last a lot longer. And the biggest cost long-term in a municipal facility, I've been doing it for 38 years, is maintenance. And if you design and build a facility, that's a very inexpensive facility, it's going to, you're going to pay twice, three times over 25 years. So you have to build something in the mid-range that's economical to build, but it's going to waste a lot. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to. I have a gentleman waiting over here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bill Humm, Conservation Commission, live on 38 Birch Hill Road.
Given the proximity of these buildings and the greatly expanded parking area, what is the plan for handling runoff from rooftops and the parking lots to ensure that it doesn't go into the bog?
John's Mr. Answer Man tonight, so...
John Tappin again. There's, in the plan right now, there's only a little bit of the, shown, only a little bit of the anticipated low-impact design. There's just one detail shown, and that is around the parking lot, where runoff from that main part of the parking lot that's parallel to the road is brought toward the road rather than going back toward the bog. And there's a, I forgot the name of it. I think drainage swale is not the correct name.
Like a rain garden.
Like a rain garden that runs along the front edge of that parking lot, parallel to Mass Road. But that's only one of the features shown, and the rest really is not detailed. It is recognized that that is a critical part of building on this parcel.
I have a second question, Mr. Chairman. Related to the first, I'm wondering if the TCBC has considered permeable pavement for the parking lot so that rain falling on it penetrates the ground rather than causing
Yes, we have, and I have also talked to the Highway Department about that. We have done no analysis of the costs involved. There are higher upfront costs, there are some higher maintenance costs. I have read that from a UNH study, some of the materials properly placed can provide longer life. But with a permeable asphalt paving, there's some additional equipment, additional costs of keeping it vacuumed. And also, you can't use the ice treatment that we currently use now, which is salt and sand mixture, which would clog the pores. So the details of the cost analogy to that hasn't been worked out at all.
Understood. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Bill. Next person, anybody? Raise your hand, it's easy. Yes, sir?
Chappelle-Hobbs Road. Maybe to give you an example, the windows, I would assume they'd be similar to the ones that were installed last summer at the Massway Schools, which were Marvin Integrity Windows? Similar to what you're thinking? Yeah, so if you look at those windows, that would be...
Kristen Priscillius, Wally Falls Road.
Are you going to answer his question?
No.
I'm waiting to see, I'm waiting to see if someone's going to answer his question first.
Oh, I thought he...
I didn't realize that was a question. Yeah, I mean, we do a lot of municipal work, and most of our clients, you can't hear me?
You got to, because be on camera, you got to go to the...
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize. Smile more. We do a lot of municipal work, some of it is of all different sizes. Most of our clients, both state and local, have really migrated to this kind of a fiberglass window. There's a million reasons for that. It does a great job of meeting the energy code and the IBC code and National Building Code. But also, it's very low maintenance, and they're really going, pretty much, other than the glazing, which eventually over time may deteriorate over 30, 40 years, like it would any window, the frames will last forever, just like the siding that John mentioned, the Hardy plank-type siding. So there are a lot of manufacturers, that's one of them. Everybody kind of makes them. But again, a base of design, that's what we use, is that kind of window, which meets the 2009 and the 2015 energy code as well.
Thank you. I'd answer your question, sir.
Okay, ma'am?
Okay. So Kristen Priscillius, Wally Falls Road. So I appreciate the consideration of making the town center keep up with the quaint and historic nature of our town. I know the windows seem like a silly thing to focus on, but I would love the idea of considering multiple panes in the window, so that it doesn't have that modern...
There are.
There are. So it's a six over six or something?
Yeah, I mean, it's in the drawings.
Okay, I didn't see that, so that's great. So my question is about the, this is, maybe it's going to seem silly too, but about the bathrooms, will there be gender-neutral bathrooms available so that people who are trans and binary can use either choice bathroom?
Who can answer that?
I'll get up again. I guess I have to go to the, I'll just stand here and aside. In the current plan, because square footage is incredibly tight and because IBC is not currently requiring that, we do not have that in a current conceptual, I'm going to stress the word, conceptual design. The number of bathrooms on this campus is, somebody mentioned, I think it was John. Yeah, it's, no, I mean, what's there now is woefully under-bathroomed. Some of the spaces are being repurposed, like the current town hall, into a meeting space. About, the answer is no. Right now, at least in a conceptual design, there's no trans bathrooms. And the other thing is, I want to say, is that we worked very hard with the TCBC in the programming to really hone the program down to what was going to serve the town 20, 25 years out, without inflating the square footage, because every square foot costs money.
Thank you.
Rachel Lagard, Wednesday Hill Road. Just to follow up to your question about the bathrooms, are the bathrooms such that they're stalls? They're single bathrooms? Why couldn't they just have the label on them that shows the bathroom, not a...
Take right out the door.
Okay. I mean, I think that would be an easy change, and that it would be anyone, a male, a female, a trans, anybody could use bathroom.
Thank you. Anybody? Question? Yes, sir?
Just a question for the plan developers. Obviously, we're moving the buildings a little bit farther apart now. Does the plan actually include upgrades for the networking infrastructure, wireless, telephony? You know, is that in this cost?
We should just have John stay up there, dude.
No, it's not in this cost. There is a list of costs by owner. It's, there's 33 items on it. About half of them are things that we are either not going to have, or the cost is almost insignificant. And the rest, we are working to get costs. Those things I need the prices for, and I'm about halfway through, and I'm at $22,000. But what you just asked about is one of those things still to be priced.
Okay, so something that's been thought about, just not priced out yet.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Anybody? Really?
One more. Again, Kristen...
Some more?
Yeah, just one more. So I know we're getting a new middle school, and so I'm assuming we're getting a tax increase for that middle school as well. So can anybody comment on how that will also increase our taxes? Or has that been thought about at all?
It certainly has been, I mean, whoever wants to comment. But I don't think we have any information relative to what the impact of that's going to be.
It's not going to go down.
Tax is never going down. I was the rep from the town of Lee for the middle school. They had like a facilities group, and we went through that process and was with Will Valley-Bresting. Different people, but the same firm. So they're looking at, you're all sitting down, right? About $50 million to do that. So in terms of tax increases, I can't tell you that. That's not information that's available now. But that's the kind of range they're looking at. Could be more, could be less. So I can't tell you that. That's going to probably come not this particular March, it's going to come the next March. But that's what they're kind of looking at.
Could you state that again? 15 or 50?
50. 5-0. 5-0. So that would take, and they're looking at two different things. One, using the same site, putting up a new building, and then tearing down most of the old one, which is okay with some people, some people don't like it. And another one is using an off-site location. They're kind of looking at staying at the same site. They like being in-town. But it's not cheap, but it's better than building a high school. High schools, they looked at different options. When we looked at different options, doing high school, we're talking even more money. So a middle school is cheaper, but it's still expensive.
Anybody else? I'm sorry. Sir?
Will a high school bond be gone by then? Was that kind of a plan? They would basically either...
That's their kind of thought process, yes.
So that would lessen the impact?
Well, in terms of the change, but, yeah. But the last one was, I don't know, 20 some...
22 million.
I saw a hand somewhere.
McKay, James Farm Road, 40 James Farm Road. Has the committee considered a use for the Lee Church Parish House?
The committee was not tasked with that particular part of it. I can tell you there is a group that's looking to see if the town will reconsider.
Did you use the microphone?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. The committee was not tasked with that particular part of the project. Our task is everything that's in the town center, not including anything to do with the parish house. At the vote, at the last March vote, part of that particular warrant article said to buy the church property and to remove that particular structure by July of this year. There is a warrant article that is looking to save, to not save, but to extend that particular time period. There is a group of people that would like to see if the town would be interested in doing something with that particular structure, but they need more time to find out what that is, what the cost would be to that, and also to see if there's any funding out there. There should be funding for that particular structure. But that has nothing to do with this particular committee.
Anybody else?
Spark Walkup, 38 Birch Hill Road. I was just wondering, I don't know what the procedures are within the town in terms of dealing with tax payments and that sort of thing. I was just wondering if somebody's taxes jump from $92 to $233, do you have... I was just wondering, if somebody's taxes jump from $92 to $233, do you have some way of offsetting that kind of jump, so that people aren't faced with suddenly having to be facing such a huge jump in their taxes? In other words, can they work out plans for paying overtime or anything, and would that be considered a possibility of thinking about that sort of thing? That's a huge jump for lots, for some people.
Well, I think that's your answer.
Yeah, you have it on that. But it might be worth thinking about.
No, I think it, you know what, I think it's a great thought, and I think it's something that should certainly be looked at, to see as part of the whole process, looking at the impacts of this.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? I see a hand. Chuck?
Chuck Cox, 36 Captain Smith Emerson Road. I guess the, I'm supporting this, it seems like people are doing a great job on, on working through this, and then I'm hoping that this, we will have something happen here. I guess the concern I have is that keeping, that a lot of this, well, the major construction, new construction probably has to be done, you know, with contractors and things, but I think there's a lot of other things in here, that I'm hoping that the town can do in-house, or committees and whatnot. The landscaping, the renovation of the Old Town Hall, some of the finish work and whatnot, and maybe some of the interior renovation of the library and whatnot, that we would have citizen input in either, you know, artistic or craftsmanship that would be involved in that. And that I'm just hoping that we can have these citizens involved, and not just coming out of your pocket, out of your wallet, but that a lot of this could do with committees and interested people. So I'm just hoping that that, it could be materials, you know, local wood, local stone, and this kind of thing, that I think would keep in character with the historical part of the town, because when they built these other buildings, it wasn't the contractor that paid in. And I guess we've sort of overdesigned ourselves, that we can't do it by ourself anymore, and we've put all these requirements that we have, that we have to meet now, and so, you know. But I'm hoping that we can keep as much personal contact as we can in that, and I really like that idea of that dance floor and the...
John?
Just to that question, we have talked about that, and one of the things in discussing that, that the committee has recognized, is that there are some things that might be done by townsfolk, but we can't, or probably should not, consider anything that is crucial to the scheduling of the project. So those kinds of things that can be separated from the critical path of construction are things that could be done by volunteers. Some of that could be landscaping, the smaller building like the tool shed was mentioned, and there could be other things like that, where the timing, if they show up two weeks late, it doesn't cost us extra with a contractor.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Hello.
Hello.
Karen Kilka from Tunnel Road. I appreciate the time and effort that's gone into this, this project, it's really a testament to the hard work of the people involved. And I've been really, you know, relatively new resident, although I've been a New Hampshire citizen all my life, been really excited to hear the many good suggestions that folks in the audience have made as well. My first question is a follow-up on questions that other folks have asked, and that is, I don't have a sense of the degree to which the plan preserves the existing historic facades, like the library. I'm already quite attached to the facade of the library and the bricks on the town hall, so I was wondering how much thought had gone into that.
John?
There's no change planned in the appearance, external appearance of the historic buildings, especially not the brick on town, the town hall. Absolutely not. When we're talking about the new materials, like the semitish siding, that's on the new construction, but the historic appearance of the historic buildings is something we do wanna preserve.
Great. The second question has to do, I'm thinking about the well-being of the town employees, and I'm hoping that the plan will incorporate spaces where most of the work of the town officials will have windows, you know, that folks are not working in a cave, basically. Meeting spaces can be inside, it doesn't really matter.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Sir? Go ahead.
Now, NATO again, Bell Lane. Do these new buildings have basements, or are they on a slab?
John?
He's answered all the other questions, this is why we did that one.
Good question. As currently budgeted, they do not have basements. When we first started considering basements, the cost estimates were very high, and financially it was difficult to justify. Now that we have a design and a footprint, and the cost engineers have given us actual numbers for the basement, those costs are much more reasonable. Those costs, actual numbers came in after the board had to look at the scope of the project and decide where to draw the line as to what is included in the project. So right now, they don't have basements. Right now, we think that they should, and the cost that we have for a full basement under the library addition, conditioned space, but not finished, was $127,000. And for the town hall, municipal office building, which is larger, the cost was about $150,000. So when you look at it on a square foot basis, and these are the adder costs, to add on instead of the slab-on-grade, which is what's currently priced. So when you look at that adder cost, it adds that additional space, conditioned, meaning heated, but not finished, costs $33 a square foot. And that's, and that's, if you wanted to use it later for a meeting room, or whatever, it's less expensive to plant for that and insulate for that when you're building it.
But then you have to make that accessible to the public, so that has to be all ADA compatible, so if you just threw that out as a storage place and not a meeting place, that throws a lot of your costs out the window.
Correct. If it's, if you're going to upfront, say, this basement is meeting space, then it needs to be accessible. If you're saying that at some time in the future, we may want to make this meeting space or accessible to the public, and so in the design, you put in a place where you could later put in an elevator, that's what was done in this building initially, when this building was built, it didn't have the elevator, but had the space for the elevator. If you did that, then you would have that expansion ability for the cost of the elevator and for finishing that space. So that's, it's not an advantage immediately, it's an advantage for the future. There are also advantages to having a basement in that it makes it much easier to make changes or fix problems in a building. If you need to add or change wiring, or communication wiring, or security wiring, that's much easier to do if you have a basement. So with a much lower cost, the committee is much in favor of basements, but as I said, when the board had to look at the cost and say, here's what we're gonna do, we did not yet have those lower costs.
Just in terms of the annex when it's moved, it's proposed to put it on a slab, and on the historical side building, that's a full basement, just to let you know, those two.
I was, I was more concerned with the town, the Newtown Hall.
Anybody else?
Hey, Dolan. Hey, Dolan, 11 Lafferty Lane. I was interested in knowing if the square footage of the library would be added on to...
Could you speak into the microphone then?
Oh, sorry. I was interested in knowing if the square footage of the library would increase if you put in a basement.
It depends, well, it depends, if you just put a basement underneath that's just for storage, you wouldn't have to increase any of the other particular places, because that would be a total of, what, sixteen, almost 7,000 square feet? So, but if you needed it as a, as a, as a place for the public to access, then it would increase. So you'd have to put an elevator too.
Yeah. So I was concerned about the addition and the space upstairs, if that was gonna be reduced.
Not at this particular time, no.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir?
Paul Parrott again, Tower Road. Spent any consideration of renewable energy, solar panels, heat pumps, geothermal, any of that kind of business?
John?
Only minimally. When the board, the proposal came to the select board about putting solar panels on the roof of this building, the preference was to not put them on buildings. The site has space available for panels on the ground. This site, Public Safety Complex, has space available for panels on the ground, but that's not part of this budget, so that's, that's...
How about the other utilities, you know, heat?
If you don't mind, John, I can answer that, since I've been working with the Energy Commission Committee to look at other sources, if you would. They're, they are looking at land at the transfer station to put in a solar array, that's, that's in work now, so they are talking, and it's, it's very preliminary, mind you, but they, we've made some trips to other places, if you would, to look at their solar array, one of which was in Elliott, Maine. So it's definitely in work, but there is no, no tight schedule on it.
How about geothermal heat?
To my knowledge, there, there has not been any work done on geothermal. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Kristen from Wildly Falls again. So to follow up with that, does it make sense to put in a heat system now that could be compatible with solar at a later time?
I can't answer the question, maybe somebody else can.
Like to put in a heat pump now, that we could then, you know, work more easily with the solar system later?
I think at this point, we need to admit that there are trade-offs in what you purchase, what extra does it cost, what does it save you, what's the payback, which have not been worked out. And if schedule allowed, it would've been nice if they were, but they haven't, and that would be one of them. Increased energy efficiency beyond what's being considered for all the buildings, that's, that's one that should be done on a feature-by-feature basis, and is really, I guess, part of the next step of design, that this conceptual design didn't go far enough in, to be able to answer those questions.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? Questions? All right, we're nearing the end. I have to ask. Paul, do you have a question?
Me?
Yes. Really? Sorry. No, that's all right, I just, anyway, in that case, I am going to close out the public hearing, and we'll move back into a regular select board meeting, and I really appreciate that, because actually, you know Clemson, Alabama, is 8:00 p.m. tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, we are still in a meeting here, with all due respect. All right. We're gonna move on with the agenda. Karen Rossi, Mr. Emery, Rowland too. Rowland, too. Talk about ski trails?
Snowmobile trails.
Oh, snowmobile trail.
And cross-country trails, cross-country skiing trails. Still, part of the trail system up in, in the Newtown Plains, Old Mill Road section, got taken away between the chinning development and a sale of a house, so the snowmobile trail needs to be rerouted. And the safest way, and with all landowner permission, is to come through the town parcel on Old Mill Road, which used to be owned by the Kellys, was an old gravel pit that the town, back in 2009, partnered with NRCS and made it a wildlife preserve. And so, gonna re, we'd like to reroute the snowmobile trail down an old gravel road through the old pit, and there's two, there's two possible routes you guys have on your plan. One's the shortest route, but the longest, they have to drive down the side of Old Mill Road longer, and then the other one is through the pit a little bit further, and then you just have to do a diagonal cross across the street to Seth Peters' property and pick up the existing snowmobile trail. NRCS is the easement holder, they don't have any issues with it. The Conservation Commission, I think there's a couple representatives here tonight, they're meeting tomorrow to discuss it, but Bill Humm and Catherine Fisher, myself and Emery went out today and walked where the proposed trail is going to be, and not to speak for them, but I believe Mr. Humm can answer any questions, but I don't believe they have any questions, but they're gonna bring it to the committee tomorrow night, but because the town of Lee owns the land, we do need to get permission from you guys tonight, hopefully, so they can get working on moving the trail before... hopefully, so they can get working on moving the trail before the next big snowstorm comes.
So explain the map a little bit, because there's a black line and there's a bunch of...
So the black line is an existing gravel road.
Yep.
That has been there forever. It's, you know, grown in now with grasses and stuff. That is the shortest route up, but it will make going, they'll have to go further down Old Mill Road on the snowmobile, and if, you know, there's a lot of snow or high snowbanks, it's more dangerous to do that. So they would like the options to do the straight line and the dotted line. So the dotted line would bring them diagonally across to connect the trail, the existing trail, or Mr. Peters' property where the existing trail is, and then they'll just go through and go on the trail. So they'd like the option to do both. The groomer is going to do the solid black because it's too steep the other way. The dotted is a very steep bank. So they'd like the permission to do both, but they will most likely just do the solid black. And then in part of granting permission, there's a parking lot with boulders. There's a fence and then boulders. They would move the boulders at the beginning of the snowmobile season, so they, just six feet wide to get a snowmobile through, and then the club will put the boulders back at the end of the season. Mrs. Emery, you're the president of the Lees No Travelers?
Yeah, and I can answer any questions you guys have. I've worked with all landowners in the surrounding and got all the permissions up to this point. So the biggest thing is it's going to be low-wait pack once the snow is on the ground. And as long as there's not snow on the ground, the trail will be closed. And like she said, we'll move the boulders as soon as there is snow on the ground and move them back as soon as snow's gone, so. And the trail that goes down through there is kind of already a walking trail for most of it, so it's kind of utilizing what's already there. And as well, it'll make a nice trail for cross-country skiers and hikers and that sort of...
Sir, did you have a comment?
I'm a true, oh, no, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm also with a claw. That's why I'm here.
All right. I thought that's why you raised your hand.
Mr. Trump, I've got, I said, if Bill could come, just give us a preliminary. You know the property, don't you, Bill? We won't hold you to it, but at the same time, we'd like an opinion.
Well, I can't speak on behalf of the commission because we have not had an opportunity to discuss it. We will tomorrow night. As Karen mentioned, Catherine Fisher and I were out with Karen and with Emery earlier today, and as best we could ascertain, it would not cause any problems that would be of concern to the commission. So I don't see anything that should inhibit it, but as I say, I can't speak for the commission just yet. Thank you.
Can I ask Bill a question? Bill, they're asking for both versions. You have no problem with either version, or just the one that goes along the road?
I have no problem with either.
Okay.
The solid one would allow them to get the groomer down without having to go down a steep slope. And they do need the groomer to do, prepare the trail. But the snowmobiles themselves could have quicker access on the dotted line and not have to go along the road, which could be dangerous if there are significant snowbanks at that time.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'd like to point out too, the easement holder has that same map, so they're well aware of the routes.
Okay, so I move to grant the Lees No Travelers Association permission to run a snowmobile trail through town-owned land located in between the Old Mill Reserve Trail and Old Mill Road, provided that the Conservation Commission grant the same at their meeting on 1-8-2019. All in favor?
All right.
I think we're done. I have to make a motion to adjourn. What, what, what?
Look at you.
Miscellaneous.
Oh, miscellaneous.
He's only enthusiastic.
He wasn't even up to the game.
It'll be quick. The past few years, the treasurer, Ben Jeans, has taken the town hall staff out to lunch for the holidays, and we were not able to find a schedule that could work with everybody this year. So we'd like to be able to do that Wednesday. So we'd like to be able to shut the selectman's office from 12 to 2:30.
Which day was this again?
Wednesday. I think it's Wednesday. The night? Yes. Yes.
You have something to skip this day?
Oh, no, I have a TCVC meeting.
Yeah, what?
TCVC meeting.
At three o'clock.
I'm thinking there's something happened on the ninth of August.
Have any problem that you just put notice out, so you, that'll be fine.
Any leftovers, doggy bags, come back to the board?
Bring it back. Put it in the refrigerator. All right, thank you. That's all we have.
Now? I make a motion. I make a motion to adjourn.
Very good.
All in favor? All right. Thank you.